Welcome to the Pembroke School Committee meeting for Tuesday, March 19th, 2024. We are so lucky today to have PAC 105 with us and they're going to come up here and they're going to assist us with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you guys want to come up, if everybody could stand. It's a big flag right up there. So you got to turn around and look at that flag. Ready?
Ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Nice job, Mark.
All right. So welcome all. I don't know if there's anyone here today that wishes to make a public comment, but now would be the time. If you needed to come up to the microphone? Nobody? Great. All right, so communications, adjustments to the agenda, there are none. Approval of the bill schedule, the warrants are being circulated. Consideration of approval, school committee meeting minutes of February 15th and March 5th. So do I have a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes of February 15th?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. And is there a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes of March 5th?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. All right. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
So under my report tonight, we are going to conclude with the last two budget presentations. We've done the order a little bit different each year, but I think what we've learned in the past couple of years is that it makes the most sense for the two largest departments, teaching and learning and student services, to go last. After you've heard everything from the building level and the department level, it kind of feeds up into those two budgets. So tonight, we're going to start with student services. Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I'm being blinded by the light, so I'm sorry if I squint. Okay, so just a little bit overview in regards to the presentation tonight. I want to highlight some of the great work that we've done this past school year in FY '24. Talk about special education. Oh, wow. This is going to be great. Special education and Section 504, some data as well as kind of some recommendations. Social, emotional, learning and behavioral supports our English language learners under our English language education section of the department. And then aside from budget, I did want to update a little bit about our communication protocols and some of the information about how we communicate in special education. So to highlight some of the great things and work that we've done this school in special education, some of you may have heard about Titans Treasures, which is a first time for us. We do have the coffee bean at the high school that is run by our PACE program, but this year, for the first time, our elementary students, under the direction of Ashley Cross at Habermock, the team chair, developed a school store. So the Titans Treasures is open three days a week for students in grades three to six, and it is run by our students in the PLC classroom, consisting of grades four, five and six. So special education program running this under the direction, not just of Ashley, but the classroom teacher and support staff. So it's been a great addition. They sell everything from pencil grips, grips to headphones and some gadgets and things. The students and the staff have really enjoyed that. Continuation of our Unified Sports. I know you've heard us talk about Unified Basketball Team, and this year, we added Bocce at the middle school. So that is another unified sport for our secondary students. And then our Best Buddies kind of club has participated in lots of different activities, both at the middle school and the high school this year. So that is a club consisting of both mentor kind of general education students as well as special ed students, both at the middle and the high school. One of the big PD focuses in the area of special education this year has been on the new IEP. More information to come with that as the year goes on and into next year, but our, kind of, we are following Desi's IEP Improvement Project. So this has gone on for the last couple of years, and it's been, it's quite a process of getting information and feedback from stakeholders. There have improved not just the technical side of the IEP as far as pages and sections, but really shifted the focus to be more a strengths-based approach. So focusing in on recognizing that special education students are general ed students first, and really focusing on strengths and their kind of current performance prior to talking about deficits and addressing things. It's also shifted the focus to be really family engagement and focusing in on student voice. So there will be a big piece of, especially at the beginning and prior to IEP meetings, getting student input even down to preschool and then all the way up to students that are more in our 18 to 22 population as well. So that has been a focus this school year, really about the PD for not just us as administrators, but our teaching staff. So it started kind of at the faculty meeting timeframe, and then most recently, last week, during our early release day for elementary. We'll do that again in May. Secondary as well, doing it more at their faculty meeting and then some of their early release time. In June, we'll be bringing all of our staff together, teaching staff, to do some more professional development, and then some summer PD as well. We were fortunate enough to receive a grant for part of the funding, to be able to get substitutes in June, to support some work for our clerical staff that has a lot of work to do in our student information system, which is called ESPED. So some of that. And then summer work for teachers, not only to familiarize themselves, but to be able to start creating exemplars, going in and kind of transforming the old IEP into new. Certainly, there's a parent notification piece. Back in the fall, I did a little bit of an informal PD for CPAC, just a slight overview, but we'll be doing further communication and then at least one presentation in May at CPAC. Some of the other department kind of highlights is certainly some of these I talked about in the fall when we talked about our social, emotional, learning update. We were fortunate enough, again, to have Interface, which was co-funded both by PTAD and the district, which is that helpline for community members, anyone in Pembroke who is interested in finding mental health services and struggling. So that is a helpline where the caller can receive information and then appoint person to help them find mental health services through their insurance. So it matches those services. Some of the other things we're doing with professional development, you may remember, we have a partnership for mass partnerships for youth. So that does provide webinars and conferences for our mental health staff. They found this very effective and helpful. A lot of it is online, so it's very easy for them to sign up for webinars after school, before school, during the day as well. In our English language learners, we have implemented what's called Lexia English. So most of you are familiar with the Lexia platform that we use with our K to 2 students. That is an online reading, early literacy reinforcement platform that we use to track data and practice. We have implemented that for some of our English language learners, so our more newcomers and Level Ones. So those are students that have the lowest level of English language acquisition, and we've been able to do that and help them kind of practice with that speaking, listening, language acquisition. In addition, I added a couple of things since I sent this presentation, but Bowers Buddy Award was just awarded. So that is our therapy dog of Rachel McGowan's. She is our, one of our social workers at the high school. And so her and Holly Garrity, the other social worker, implemented a buddies award this year. So they are giving out awards to students who positively impact the school culture with kindness, inclusivity. So that is a picture of one of the students who received that award most recently. And then second step, I know we've presented a few times on that social, emotional, learning curriculum that we've implemented at the K5 level this Just an overview of staffing, just so people kind of understand the realm of special education, starting with the administrative level of team chairs. Obviously, we have quite a number of teaching staff, but there are a lot of support staff that go along with special education, with school psychologists, speech pathologists, OTs and PTs. We do contract out for some services that are not enough, but maybe one or two students may require a TBI, a teacher of the visually impaired, or a teacher of the deaf, educational audiologist. We do contract out for one of our LPNs. So we do have two students who have one-to-one nursing staff. One is a contract and one is one of our employees. And then on the right side of the slide is really just our social, emotional and behavioral supports that we have in place, our social workers. We do contract for a behaviorist for several hours a week. And then obviously, we've talked a lot about our Compass and Titan Lab supports for students. Of course, our English language learners, as I just talked about, the ESL teachers, and then our nursing staff as well. Each year, I like to give just a little bit of an overview of some of the changes that have happened over the years in special education as far as enrollment. I know our total student enrollment has declined, but special education has not. So it has declined a little bit in numbers, but not compared to kind of the percentages. We are seeing an increase in special education eligibility, as well as, I'll talk about Section 504, based on students' disabilities and needs. We are in line, and just as the state is increasing, we are as well. So we are in line kind of with that state overall percentage and that trend that we're seeing of student needs over the last few years. So we talk about special ed placements. So placement is where a child receives their services. So we talk about the continuum of least restrictive. We always want to try to educate our special education students in the least restrictive environment, and that would be in their general education setting. So the majority, or 76% of our students are considered full inclusion. So they receive their supports within that general education setting. Those content area teachers are grade level teachers at the elementary level. As we get more restrictive, some students may require some of their instruction outside the classroom and content. So it's considered a partial inclusion. So part of their day may be in the room, part of their day may be out receiving that direct instruction, whether it's a content or support services. As you heard me talk about, our PACE and PTC programs, those are considered substantially separate. So those are for students who have moderate to more severe disabilities that require their instruction outside of the general education classroom. And so they spend the majority of their day in a substantially separate classroom, as most of those students are not able to access kind of the curriculum at the level of the grade level or content. And then out of district students, there are times where students are unable to continue to access services and supports in Pembroke Public Schools, and they do receive their education outside of Pembroke. Public days are, for the most part, collaborative placements. So North River Collaborative, South Shore Educational Collaborative. Some are housed within public schools and other districts, other freestanding buildings. And then private day programs are not necessarily located geographically close to Pembroke, but there are several across Massachusetts that our students go to. Most recently, there have been New England Academy opened in Marshfields, which is closer to us, which is a therapeutic private day program. But most of our students who attend private day are on either the 128 Belt or into Boston and et cetera. And then residentially, we're just under 1% of our students who require residential placement. So those are students with more severe disabilities that require intensive services, 365 days a year and round the clock. Some of our students require supports even overnight. So they have 24-hour support in order to effectively make progress. Any questions? I know it's a lot of information. So Section 504 plans is very separate from special education. So certainly, students with disabilities may still require support, but don't require that specialized instruction, which occurs in special education. So Section 504 plans are students who've been identified with a disability, whose physical or mental kind of impairment substantially limits their life functioning. A life functioning could be a learning environment. It could be ability to navigate. I always give examples about someone with a physical impairment, maybe who needs access to an elevator. They would need a Section 504 plan for that accommodation in order to access a building. These, these plans are very different. There is not typically instruction. They may have support from a mental health staff or overseen by a BCBA or such, but there isn't a direct service needed. So their curriculum and instruction is not altered. They just need accommodations in order to access. Skip the money slot. So as always, as Erin has shared several times, in order to, I think, make our department the best we can, always ask for things that I think would make our department grow and support our students in special education. Most recently, we've had, obviously, as I mentioned, that increase in special education testing as well as counseling, which I'll talk about in a minute. And we did reference that in November during our social, emotional, learning update. We've certainly seen an influx of that testing piece. Whether or not students are eligible, there are times where we test a student, and like I said, they may not be eligible for special education, but the testing still needs to occur. So we've definitely seen that influx of even requests for testing, whether that's by parents or guardians, or just recommendations from our instructional support team. Our current model for the last six or seven years has been a shared school psychologist at the high school and at Habermock. Up to this point, it's been sustainable. As Habermock has been the smaller school, they tended to have smaller numbers in special education and counseling needs. Their needs have since grown. We've added another program in the last couple of years. Our district-wide programs are quite full. And then just, again, the evaluations that need to occur and counseling. So I am requesting a .5 school psychologist to be able to support the high school. Currently, Megan Cullum is our secondary special education coordinator. She acts as the chair at the high school. She is a school psychologist. So in that model, she basically interprets the reports at meetings. So a school psychologist would not need to attend, which is why I'm asking for that .5, just for the testing purposes at the high school. Last year, I did ask, and I do believe that we need an added district coordinator, not a full-time person, but more of a .3% of a full-time person, in order to kind of support the needs of added district students. Again, Megan Cullum is our added district coordinator, and that is part of her responsibilities. I have taken off some of the caseload off of, you know, to help her and support her as the needs are growing. So our numbers have remained about 30 students, but the needs of those students and the amount of meetings have increased. So what used to be maybe one meeting per year has certainly increased. We're communicating more often with families on a weekly basis, meetings, communicating with schools. Over the last couple of years since COVID, we've had a much more difficult time placing students. So the timeframe to send out what's called a referral packet for special education has been much more in-depth and timely, where there's lots of waiting lists. We're sending referral packets out to what we typically would start in the least restrictive of a, if a child's needed a public day. And then we are increasing our kind of look because we're not able to find placements. So it's just a lot more coordination and needs of the added district students, coupled with, obviously, as I just talked about, that increase in special ed testing and numbers as she oversees 7 through 12 and is the chair at the high school. She also manages that 18 to 22 population. So that would be another request. And then just some professional development with the new IEP to continue into next year. Happy to pause if there's questions, or I can keep going?
I have a couple of quick questions. Looking at the Section 504 plans, the number has jumped up significantly from 2020, '21.
Correct.
Is this mainly mental health-related, COVID-related?
Uh, somewhat COVID-related, but yes, mental health. And you'll see kind of on this slide, and I had referenced this again in November, that percentage of students who are presenting with what's called an emotional disability, so students with depression, anxiety, oppositional defiance disorder, those have increased. And again, they may not need specialized instruction with content, but need those accommodations and access to people like social workers, being able to, you know, have accommodations to be successful in the classroom setting.
Yes. And I think I just had one other question. I'm just trying to see where it was. I jotted down some notes. Oh, no, actually, I did have a question. You answered it. Yeah, you answered it already.
Okay. So as I started to talk about data with social, emotional and behavioral needs, still seeing those kind of general difficulties with students, dysregulation and coping skills, that executive functioning, depression, school avoidance and refusal, as I talked about, those increases in IEP and 504 plans, we have seen also an increase of students and qualifying under health disability. So that could be a medical-related disability, and it also could be these things like ADHD, ADD, et cetera. And then we've certainly seen an increase over the last few years of students who require hospitalization. So we're on about an average of 15 students per school year that may need either a partial hospitalization or a full hospitalization, where they're coming back into school. And those supports that we have now have in place, like Compass at the high school, the middle school, and our supports at the elementary with the labs, have been certainly a support for those students as they transition back into school after being hospitalized.
Jess, my good, just ask, the 15 students, and I'm not asking to identify, mostly older students, younger students, or kind of a little bit of...
It's a mix.
It is.
Yeah.
Interesting. Thank you.
Sure.
Just to review kind of our tiers of support within our social, emotional, learning, we certainly have lots of what we call proactive supports in the classroom setting, our district accommodation plan, which is accommodations that students can access, teachers can provide in the general ed setting, up through things that we've implemented this year, like Second Step, some of our proactive social thinking with social skills, responsive classroom, some of the additional things at the high school, some of our units. Mark talked about that break free from depression piece in grade nine, where students are receiving an entire unit during the wellness unit of their PE class. Certainly, that therapy dog and comfort dogs. We also have other dogs come into the elementary level for students to access, and we're finding those things, what we call proactive approaches, very helpful. Sometimes there are students that require that kind of small group counseling or support. Sometimes our mental health staff are going into classrooms, especially at the younger level, or running groups at the high school level during Titan time. And then our tier three is more students who require some more intensive one-to-one, whether it's a recommendation for the Titan Lab or Compass or one-on-one counseling. And as you can see, kind of our small group and individual counseling, that's just totals. Those are for students in special education, 504 plans and general education. Sorry about that. I keep skipping the money. Not on purpose. So similar to what Mark had requested in his budget slide, this is something that I had requested last year as well, just that coordinator, and I would expand it, just not just to guidance, certainly overseeing guidance and making sure we have a consistent programming, 7 through 12 in the guidance department. But obviously, that vertical alignment of supports from pre-K to 12 would be extremely helpful, not only for our mental health staff support and creating things like professional development, learning communities for them, but exploring such things as consistent behavioral support approaches, such as PBIS, which is a positive behavioral intervention system, to be able to have something that's solidly used and consistently across the district in our approaches with students. Thinking about things like in-care coordination between schools and community-based providers. Certainly, we talked about Interface, but to be able to have somebody, a liaison, to help support our social workers with that piece, and then increasing kind of that family engagement and coordination for professional development for families as well. Our English language learners. So certainly, as our other numbers are increasing, our English language learners have as well, over the last few years, we're about 79 students right now. I think we're just at 80 as well, which before I updated this slide. And those are students that require English language education of some sort. And we'll talk about kind of in a second about our direct instruction. So 52 of our, what we call Ls, our ELs, receive direct instruction from one of our ESL teachers. So they require direct language acquisition instruction in order to support their access to the curriculum. We also have 27 Fels, so former English learners. Those students may have what we call graduated out of needing that direct instruction based on the access testing, which is a statewide, similar to MCAS, for students that have limited language acquisition. But they still do require monitoring. So our ESL teachers work with general education teachers to monitor progress, to assure that students are still able to access and make progress with the curriculum. And then a number of families, 46 in total, both students that are Ls and then outside of students who qualify for English language education, there are some of our families that require those interpreters and written translations. So we're also supporting families as well through our department. We have about 15 total different languages spoken in our district. We have a, we call it the largest population, but it's still about 20 or 30% with Egyptian, Arabic, and then Brazilian, Portuguese. There's lots of guidance about English language education, both from Desi and then just good practices, our lower-level English proficiency. So students who we consider Level Ones or newcomers, students who've had interrupted education that come into Pembroke, and those Level Ones are really, we call it from the access, that's a score. So it's Level 1 through 5, and then students kind of graduate out. The 25% of our Ls do require that more intensive instruction, and there are certainly recommendations. It's more of a guidance for English language education, not a requirement. So we do our best we can to meet that. But it's a pretty lofty guidance in regards to the amount of services. They recommend like three blocks a day of students, services for students who are at that Level 1 newcomer range. And then some of, ooh, I'm not doing too good tonight. There we go. Recommendations for the English language education kind of budget request, these are to support kind of globally our curricular materials and then support our newcomers. As I mentioned, about 25% of our students are very limited English-speaking. So these pocket-talk little devices would be very helpful for our students. It does allow them to translate on the spot, take pictures of things like signs, be able to text information, gather information back and forth, and provide kind of them the ability to converse on the spot without support. And then in addition, we have seen an influx at our secondary level. So we are in need of some curricular tools. We use National Geographic as one of the companies we use for our instructional materials. So there's about $10,000 of a request to be able to support those instructional materials at the secondary level for both the middle school and the high school. So grand total, a lot of money. So certainly recognizing where we are, but as I said at the beginning, requesting information, you know, or items that I think would make our department improve and meet the needs of all of our students. It's just a total of what I'm requesting in each of the areas of student services. Questions? I do have a couple slides just on the communication piece, but I'm happy to answer any questions about budget.
I have a question. I, um, there's been a lot made out recently about, you know, the number of students dropping in the Pembroke school system. It's happening all along the the number of resources they need seems to be growing. Looking at the number of 504 plans, it's gone up. It was 138, it's gone up 60 plans over the past four years. That was roughly, you know, roughly 28, 30% increase. And then looking at the number of English language learners, it's gone up from 60 to 79. And these, these are all students that require more services. It costs more money. So we do need, you know, this is a good argument for why we cannot drop our budget just because the number of school, the number of students is dropping. The number of students can be dropping, but the students we have require more services. So I'm really glad you've done this presentation today.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Actually, I have one question. When you're looking for a point three out-of-district coordinator, is that somebody who's in the district today that would do that as part of a role? Or would we hire a point three person? And could we hire a point three person?
Sure. Ideally, it would be someone that doesn't work in the district to be able to have that flexibility to work around scheduling meetings of out-of-districts Monday through Friday. You may remember years ago, probably eight, nine years ago, prior to that, we did have an out-of-district coordinator. She was, if you have memory, she was, she was part-time. And she worked about, at that time, maybe a point two, point through four position. So it would just be, there are retired directors that, I mean, a couple different lists are, that do that.
It's like a 960 type of thing? So they would do part-time?
Yes.
Because they're retired, but it wouldn't affect their retirement benefit?
Correct, no, sorry. I'm like, oh, what? But yes, there are people that are looking just for part-time work. That's more flexible to be able, they kind of can coordinate their schedules, so.
Just, you know, quick comment. Like I, like Mike, I'm looking at the numbers from the 504 and IEP. And what's striking to me is, is those numbers are rising at an incredible rate, right? But so is the amount of supports that we're putting in place. And so it's, it's just interesting. It's not, nothing that you're doing here or anywhere. I'm just noting that, like, it's interesting that no matter how much we, support we put in, we're not seeing the results of less people needing the services. It's like more people needing services, like more people with, you know, anxiety, like you said, or, you know, like depression or, you know, different things that require services. And I'm just surprised that, you know, no matter what we do, no matter how many social, emotional supports we put into place, it doesn't seem to be any, you know, I'd like to see some like, turn in the right direction.
One of the data points that Jess shared with you is our out-of-district placement number. That number hasn't increased, which means we've done our job philosophically to keep the kids engaged as part of our community by adding those supports.
Yep.
I would absolutely, with the, the number of increases in some of the plans that Jess talked about, I would expect that the out-of-district placement number would have risen at least slightly over the past four years, and it really hasn't.
So that's a good, good effect, because that would actually be a lot more costly.
Correct.
Yeah, that's saving us money too.
So, yeah, that, that's good.
I also think the reality is, coming out of the pandemic, you hire more kids that need more services, right?
Right. And we've, and my point was is that we've hired a lot more people to handle it.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, so, but, yeah, so, go ahead. I know you have a couple more slides.
No, that's all right. And I'm happy to answer any other questions. So as I mentioned at the beginning, when I talked about the overview, I just wanted to go over a little bit about communication practices within special education. Certainly, as a goal, we want to foster that collaborative relationship, you know, trickling down from school committee goals and district goals to ensure student success and engagement with families. Some of the best practices that we have as a district, just keeping that open and clear communication and being transparent, making sure that we have those respectful dialogues back and forth. A lot of the work does, does not necessarily happen in IEP meetings. It happens either prior to or afterwards, and those are really important. So engaging with families prior to an IEP meeting, whether that's the support staff directly, school psychologists, our social workers, or our team chairs, prepping for kind of going into the meeting. As I mentioned, the new IEP, that shift in focus to that student and parent voice does require us to do a lot of that work prior to. So it's good that we are already beginning to do that as that will be a requirement as of next year. Obviously, there are times that parents have concerns and that it's really important that we acknowledge those and we address and we document parent concerns, not just through the IEP process, but whether a parent wants something part of a record or just a conversation about their continued concerns. We certainly implement conflict resolution strategies when we need to, especially during meetings. And I always want to make sure, as well as our team chairs, that we provide parents with their rights if they continue to disagree. So there may be a proposal from a team, such as an IEP or a service, or the rejection of something. And we always want to make sure parents are educated about their next steps, like what can they do if they continue to disagree? Regarding kind of our obligations about communication, there's certainly practice in what we do on a daily basis to be proactive and to respond. There are regulations in place for parents as far as their rights, just, not just with disagreements about proposals, but also with their right to choose to bring an advocate. Typically, it's an educational advocate. There are times where parents seek out an attorney and counsel. That is their right to bring a representative to a team meeting. Other times, parents may bring a friend or a grandparent or a family member to support them. And we certainly recognize and support parents' right to do that. We understand that they may include that advocate or certain representative in communication. Our job really is to recognize and support that, but the law does not require us to communicate directly with that advocate. There's a couple legal reasons around it, certainly, and then other obligations. Some of the requirements in special education that require us to directly communicate with parents. So special ed law does not say parent or designate me, it's parent. So we are required sometimes to notify parents formally and in writing of things that goes directly to parents. Again, we recognize parents may involve an advocate or counsel on their own and to include them, but our obligation really is to parents. That being said, outside kind of regulations, why else kind of, why that's important for our chain of kind of communication and our practices within the district? As I said, some of it's regulation-wise. We are required to inform families. It also makes sure that the intended message goes directly to the parent. So oftentimes, when you're communicating, whether it's in special ed or not, there's, you know, the game of telephone, and things don't get translated directly to the intended party. So we want to make sure that that information goes directly to families and the way the message is supposed to be or we want it to be conveyed. It also allows us to clarify information. So if there's a question about something, misunderstanding, we can have that open dialogue directly with the parents or guardians. And then, and on a positive side, it really just displays that responsiveness and aligns to kind of our goal. Our goal is to work with families and be collaborative. And there are times where disagreements happen, but especially when students are younger, we need to continue to work with those families. And we recognize that our ultimate goal is to be collaborative. And again, that it certainly aligns with that new IEP focus as well of that parent kind of student voice.
Great. Well, does anybody have any questions? Mike, do you have any questions?
I just think that makes the most sense if you're communicating directly with the parents as, you know, because it, the success relies on what happens at home as well. So having the parents heavily involved, I think is, is an important thing for that process.
Jess, I just want to say thank you. I've sat through many of these, and again, the amount of information you put together is incredible.
It's a lot of information, so I apologize.
No, no, it's good.
And again, I always like to put a plug in.
I tried to do less words, but some of the slides had, have some.
The slides were great.
There was pictures, there was some pie charts.
I was very happy about that. When I was looking at it over the weekend, I was like, look at these.
Thought of you the whole time.
Now Mary Beth on the other hand.
No, I just want to put in a plug, people watching, people in the audience, if you've never been to one of those Unified Events, please make a point to go. It, it, you will laugh, you will cry, you will see spirit from the kids, you know, the student body that make up the signs, and you see some of the parents. It is, it was one of the most moving things in my seven, eight years on the committee. I, I look forward to going to those games. They're just so much fun.
So Thursday at the middle school at three o'clock is Unified Basketball. So last game of the season.
We're asking people to wear blue, so make sure you dress up.
All right, Thursday at three?
Yes.
Middle School, are you gonna go? I'll go.
It's great.
Yeah, it's.
All right, wrote down the time. All right, Allison?
So for the communication side, is that different if it's an attorney representing the family in an IEP meeting? Or is that, is it the same?
We still communicate with families directly. There are times where things become into, you know, go into litigation where our counsel may talk directly to another counsel if there's an active case at the Bureau of Special Education in mediation. But typically, we communicate directly to families.
So the, so the advocate and attorney is generally treated the same on like the smaller levels?
Some advocates are attorneys, it's great.
Yeah.
So it's on the smaller school level?
Typically, attorneys don't reach out to us directly. They may reach out to counsel, who typically directs the question back. Usually, it's to me, but they are not typically being proactive and trying to communicate.
So they can come to meetings, but they're not going to be the point of contact from the school to?
No, our point of contact is always with the family. And certainly, if, if parents want to include them in, you know, in a reply from an email or, you know, on the phone about a situation, looking for advisement, then we certainly respect that.
And how has this been communicated to families and advocates and whatnot?
I think just naturally. So part of a discussion of an advocate is at a meeting. Typically, advocates understand their kind of role. They're there to support families, contribute as a team member. Parents, for the most part, are pretty proactive in their communication. But if needed, we do clarify the information to an advocate.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm good.
So first of all, I want to say, just going back to the beginning, that I love that you got a good grant for the summer work. I think that's amazing because like, you know, like we said, it's so expensive. All the special education stuff is so expensive. So again, I love that this whole team is always looking for grants, and it's just really amazing that you're able to find them. And, you know, without having like a dedicated grant writer, we are able to really fund a lot of programs with that. So thank you for doing that. Also, I have to say, the Bowers Buddy Award, I love that idea. That is just awesome. So that's a great, great thing. So just wanted to point out those two things. I think they're great. Thank you for all of your hard work and for putting together the slides on the communications.
Yeah.
You know, I think it's, I think you're doing a great job, so appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Next up is teaching and learning.
Sorry, the X is right there. Yeah. I can't get up. Are you open up there? Yeah, I should be.
Time to switch the slides.
Yeah, but this mouse is like possessed. It's doing its own thing.
Need a mouse pen or something?
Probably, that would help, but I think it's just been, no, she's gonna. It lives in the, oh.
You have to do what the mouse wants, or? Trial and error. I know, I know. This is an unannounced, you're standing right, but it's, it's fine. An unannounced observation. You're doing great. Yep, you're doing great. We're about to set our slides at the end. We're gonna give away the punchline. Did you practice all your slides?
You missed your face.
She loves it.
All right, here we go. Teaching and learning, last but never least. So as you can see, uh-oh. Just scroll. It is your touch. So just as a reminder, that this work is obviously never done by just one person. I have a ton of assistance, not only from the people here at this table, but also from the content supervisors, Dr. Galligan, Savie, Savie Zadeh, and Jonathan Shapiro. All of those, those content supervisors are amazing in terms of the knowledge and the work that they do at the state level as well. So to keep us informed and abreast of any changes that are happening. On our team also too is Brandon, who joins us most of the time, and Megan Cullum, who's the secondary team chair for Director of Student Services of Special Ed at the seven to 12 capacity. So we have a lot of input for these particular slides and where we're headed. Oh, let's go the other way. Okay, so a lot of the stuff you've heard about before, but I, what I tried to focus on tonight is just really the new stuff. We do obviously so many things, and we have so many products, and I don't want to have to list and drag you through all of them. But some of the things that we've been doing this year that are especially important has been our focus on literacy. You've met our reading specialists who came in and taught you how to, you know, build words with little trees and red letters. They're doing a great job. They are absolutely so enthused and excited about the work that they do and the progress that they're seeing with this new phonics program has been very positive. We've been able to see two, two slices of data so far, which has been really, I think, affirming for the teachers. It's a very prescriptive kind of program where you have to do certain things each day, and that can, that can sometimes feel like, oh, are we getting enough? Are we going enough? And the data is showing us that it's being very, very positive. One of the things that we also instituted this year was a DIBELS scoring system, which gives us some good benchmark data on students, and it helps us to know where students are, you know, relative in the classroom for sure, but also it's based on sort of national norms. So that's a really good tool for our youngest learners and also acts as a screen for dyslexia or other reading disabilities that we might have. This year, we piloted Fish Tank, which is a, it, when we talked about literacy, we talked about the phonics part of the, the reading rope, but we also have to talk about the content part. How do kids learn things? How do kids learn why the sky is blue? How do they learn about the tides? How do they learn that stuff? And what Fish Tank or any other content, knowledge piece of your literacy curriculum does is provides reading opportunities for students to start to absorb that information. So we know our littlest learners, our K to two kids, need a basis because by the time they hit grade three, right, they have to be reading to learn. Whereas in K to two, we always talk about them learning to read. So that's really important during those formative years that they're getting some of that background information so that when it starts to get taught in a more content-focused way in grades three through 12, they have something to hook on to. They have some memories, they have some, you know, working knowledge of what those, what those things are. Yeah, this year, we also switched our third, fourth, and fifth graders to iReady, which we use for math. We switched it to, for our literacy as well. We felt, or Dr. Gall, he felt he did most of the research on this piece of it, but that it was more closely aligned with the Massachusetts frameworks and the standards that we had here. It is a Massachusetts-based program, much like Lexia is. Both excellent products. And the teachers are, were initially, they were finding that it was a bit of a struggle for our students to adapt to that program, but it's a good struggle. And they're very pleased now with the work that they're seeing and the skills that the students are, are developing. And finally, the last thing we added this year in the literacy component was for our sixth grade students, we extended a program called No Writing, which our students have in grade seven and eight. Allison loves this program so much.
I'm pro-writing, just to be clear.
Send my kid to your house.
Yeah, it's, it is, it's heavily based on writing in regards to another, other skills that, you know, that it works on vocabulary and other things as well. But our sixth grade teachers are positive about it. I'm not sure if our sixth grade parents are, but our sixth grade teachers are. Much like when we went to Envisions and nobody knew what was going on with math. You know, we had like apps for parents to bounce on to, like, how do I answer this question? So in the STEM area, we've been focusing K to six on Open Sai Ed in grade six. And this is a huge pedagogical shift. We are in our second year. The, the units are very long and they're very complicated, they're very hands-on. And it's all about identifying a phenomenon and trying to figure out as a scientist, how would you manage it? So some of the questions that they look at are, why do we sometimes see different things when we're looking at the same object? Like telephone, right? Just, how do, how do instruments move when they're making sounds? But the, the students and the, and the teachers are becoming better at all of these skills in regards to their, when you see them in the classroom, you see them talking about this and writing down answers and then testing it. And you actually hear the discourse amongst students about how they're agreeing or disagreeing. students about how they're agreeing or disagreeing and why. It's very sophisticated work for grade six, but they're really, really doing a great job and it's exciting to see that progress. This is the direction that the science assessments are moving in, in the future for the state of Massachusetts. They're going to be looking more at like giving students a, almost what I would call a case study, there's probably a better name in the science world for it, but giving kids a situation or simulation to work through and to use their skills to determine whether or not their science skills are strong and their, and obviously their content knowledge. Okay. One of the other things that we've been doing this year to support students is we have February and April math academies for our students. That's, Sue will like this, all this stuff's been grant-funded, but this is grant-funded as well. We have students in grades three through six that join us over the vacation and they receive up to five hours of math instruction a day. It's high dosage tutoring. You can see on the right, those are our third grade teachers, Mrs. Coulter and Mrs. Matheson. I was like.
She's hitting well.
No, it was a Michelle. Anyways, they are, their third graders were zookeepers during the week of February vacation and the kids created their own zoos and they did a whole map with area, perimeter, all kinds of logistics were going into that, lots of dressing up too, which is kind of entertaining and fun, but they were great. They put together some really great tools for our students and what we're able to do sometimes with these math academies, which I like a lot, is to sort of share best practices district-wide. The teachers are not all from the same school, not all necessarily from the same grades, and they collaborate so beautifully together and share everything so that they're thinking like, wow, I love what you're doing in the fourth grade at Bryanville. I want to do that too. So they, they adapt and modify and it's, it's really, it's really exciting and the kids obviously are amazing. It's super fun for me. And then we have a STEM challenge going over there with our fourth graders. That was one of their, sort of their break projects, which was kind of great. So again, a great part of the work that we're doing to support our students. We've talked a lot about pathways here. Again, to your point, Sue, this is, these are our last year's pathway students because our interns aren't quite there yet, so we're still in that process right now. But this year, we've received up $35,000 to pay students, some kind of work, well, they, you know, minimum wage for the work that they're doing while they're in, in some of their interns. Not all of them meet the grant criteria. The two that we're working on right now are for technology STEM placement interns, so those, those students in computer science, digital arts kind of qualify. We actually might have a student end up working as a science teacher or working in that, as a science student teacher. And then some of you might remember a couple of years ago, we secured a grant for high school seniors to work in our elementary and middle schools and that grant is back this year. So we were able to, to do that again too, which is exciting. It's a great way for our seniors to get out there and especially for any of you who's ever had a senior, senioritis is alive and well. We've talked a lot about the biomedical and engineering pathways that were developed and the courses. You can see there on the left, they're about to give that poor semblance of an arm a shot. And then they're, on the right, you can't see it very well, but they're using a CAD/CAM type of application to create a 3D kind of model there. So it's pretty, pretty lofty curriculum. It's very, it's very challenging and it's really exciting again to see the kids embracing it and really pushing themselves to be a part of it. These are our pathways numbers for this year. You can see obviously that we had a great amount of interest in our biomedical and engineering groups, which was not a huge shock. And I just want to point out that this is just the students that are taking the courses that are going to do this for four years and be on the pathway. We have, I think, almost 100 students in biomedical engineering and I think about the same, maybe 75 in engineering. So we have a lot of students accessing these classes, not necessarily choosing it as their pathway, but as a great supplement to the courses studied that they already have at the high school. And these are grant-funded too, Sue.
It's my favorite phrase.
So even though I ask for a lot of money, I do try to get a lot of money. And just to review, again, we've talked about this, but I, I really think it's important that, you know, our students are rebounding to those pre-pandemic scores, that there is progress happening. I think sometimes we can get very, you know, bogged down in what's not going well. Things are going well, there's positive things that are, that are happening. And again, I'm, I'm very proud of our AP program, which is a very open program. We encourage students to take an AP class. I think it's a great way for students to get a sense of if they're going to college, what a college intro course might look like. So that's a really positive thing to have under your belt before you land in a college because it gives you a little bit of a safety net, just in terms of looking at a textbook that's written for a college level. It's a different type of text. All of these things are a little bit of an advantage if that's the pathway that you choose to go on. Okay, here's Patrick's favorite.
All grant-funded.
So not so much. So as you know, we, last year, Mr. Mark Duffy, who had been our content supervisor for math since 2004, moved on to an amazing position at Plymouth South and he is now the Director of Career and Technical Education at Plymouth. Well, for the whole, for all of Plymouth, but he's located at Plymouth South. So that was exciting for him, not so exciting for me. That all took place in August. So we did post for a math content supervisor, but there was not, as you can well imagine, at the end of August, not a very deep pool for that position at that time. What I am proposing as a bit of a shift in, in similar to the way that we have modeled humanities, is that we have a STEM content supervisor, somebody who'd be responsible for overseeing curriculum in math and in, in science. And that also comes with a couple of other, you know, pieces to it. The business department is in there, the computer science department is in there. So it's a, it's a good, it's a lot of position, but it's a lot of overlap anyways. It makes a little bit of sense for that to come together. I think it's a good model as well for us to have a STEM and a humanities person doing that work. What I am proposing though is that we would add, or actually it wouldn't really be an add, it's just a reallocation of funds. Patrick. We would add an elementary content supervisor position. You can see the influx of change that's happening in K to six. There's the, the demand for more rigorous curriculum and for support in the classroom is growing all the time. And I think it's really important to have somebody dedicated to the elementary K to six curriculum to feed into the K to 12 content supervisor roles as well. So they would all work together, but I think that that would be a really important piece. As it stands now, our content supervisors do both of those things, but as you can well imagine, five buildings, three different schedules, it is really challenging to spend as much time as possible. And I think with some of the new things that we'd like to introduce at the elementary level with new literacy programs or new science programs, it would be really good to have somebody that could be day-to-day in the elementary school and not be splitting their time between the secondary and elementary. If you remember the slide that I showed you about pathways, one of the things I'm asking is for our pathways coordinator, Mary Ellen Gates, is to become a full-time pathways coordinator. That would, she right now is a point four business teacher. That would entail adding somebody, a part-time person to do those business courses. The reason that I'm, that this is on my list is that if you remember those numbers from what the ninth and 10th grade numbers look like, those students are on the pathway. In a few years, she's going to have over 100 students that she's trying to place. And it's a challenge, it's more of a challenge to place a high school intern than a college intern. Also, when you're getting to those numbers, we're not going to be able to place every single kid with some kind of a connection here in Pembroke. And that entails a lot of PR work, that entails going to visit the sites, that entails selling us to South Shore Hospital or to, to the BI in Plymouth. We're going to need to be doing some of that outreach and remember, there are other towns also doing that with their students too. So it's important for us to start to cultivate these relationships so that when we have 50 kids to place for biomed, we're ready. And that's, I think, a huge part of that is having some time to make those relationships and plan it. She also does a lot with each student in terms of working with resumes, working on the soft skills around interviewing, working on talking to families, making sure that the communication is staying open. So I think that that would be a very valuable investment. The next ask on my list is just to support Brandon in terms of the amount of technology that we, it's not even just the devices, which is an overwhelming number for them to keep up with and to manage, but the sophistication of the software. So for example, our engineering and biomedical students have to have completely different types of software installed, updated, working, communicated with. It's, the, the changes are real, computer science especially. It's all, and it's always changing. Those industries are constantly changing. So I think it would be really helpful to have a secondary instructional technology integrator dedicated solely seven to 12. That way we have, we could have another, you know, Mike Tinker solely dedicated to K to six, and I think that would help them a lot. And it would give Brandon an opportunity to actually breathe. I mean, he's also teaching and running the help desk. He is an amazing contributor, but I do think there's a tipping point and I think that we're getting there with the amounts of things that we're asking, you know, or integrating, not so much asking, but that we're integrating. He never says no, he always says yes, but. And the last.
Breathing's overrated.
Yeah, yeah. The last thing that has been on my list for a while and I, I'm just never going to let this dream die, is that I do think we need to start introducing world languages at a younger grade. I know that that's, you know, in a, in a very tight budget year. I know that might not be your number one priority, but I, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that I, I think it really would be helpful to our students and I think other communities do this and I think that that, having that extra year, that exposure year, puts you in a better place by grade seven. So those are, that's just the beginning, Patrick. Slide one. Okay. The second thing obviously is something that is already in our budget, so no need to, no need to be overly concerned, but I just wanted you to have an idea of what we use that money for. So our, our curriculum line is mostly dedicated to revision and development, new courses, looking at our MCAS scores, looking at the questions that we use on our benchmarks, how, how are they aligned, how are we keeping up in regards to that kind of stuff. We have common units, K to six, in our elementary schools that all three elementary schools do. This gives these, the teachers, you know, district-wide time to come together, look at those products, talk about what's happening in those classrooms. When we first started our teaching and learning department, that was the number one priority, was trying to have each of our elementary schools consistent in the number of assessments in the units they were teaching. They don't need to be lockstep, it doesn't need to be exactly the same, but the idea being that by the time our students get to seventh grade, they've had a very similar experience and at least content-wise, students are in the same place. And that's a challenge in three different buildings. It just really, it never fails to amaze me. But that would be in the budget already. This is also included in our maintenance of effort budget, the, Sue, you're gonna like it, Open SciEd, there's a lot of grant funding that comes there. The project Lead the Way is a little bit more expensive, but again, that's also funded in a couple of places through grants that we received that'll run through next year. And our advanced placement summer institutes, those are our students that choose to teach our AP classes and the training that they get that goes with that usually is about a 40-hour course, can be online or it could be in-person depending on the, the teacher's schedule and flexibility. But a very important course for our students, or at least for our teachers to have so that our students are benefiting from that, that knowledge. Here's where it gets a little crazy. So one, these are the investments that we'd like to make in terms of materials and basically materials to support instruction. We'd like to add Fish Tank as a pilot for our grades three to five so that they can also start to look at something consistent from each grade to look at how they're doing it. They do have common units, but what Fish Tank would offer them is an opportunity to look at some of the writing pieces that go with it. We'd also like to improve the DIBELS scoring product that we have. Right now, we have the baseline scoring system where they're, you know, ticking things off in a box and they're making their charts and then they're inputting them. This, this allows our reading specialists to score online right away, which, that might sound like such a small distinction to you, but what it also does is it allows them to push in more or pull out more students. It gives them more face time with students, the less time that they have to spend doing some of those clerical tasks. I also, you know, I just like the idea of the, the way that some of these programs work, you get immediate results as it's much quicker turnaround time. So those things are really important. Envision is up for a renewal and that's a, usually every, you can do it every three, every six, every one, but this would be for a, a three, three-year purchase. And then those, the rest of those things are, are new texts that we need because there are some kind of renewal going on or something's happening that, I guess Romeo and Juliet's about 1,000 years old. It's, it came from Silver Lake, I think, so it's time for that, that particular.
It already is a matter of.
It is really, right. But it's time for that to be, that particular text to be updated. Pathways, you can see some of it can come from grants, but the biomedical in particular, I was looking at some of the stuff today and it is amazing. There are clay kits that are coming for next year for human body systems for students to work with in regards to how the human body works. And it, it, the materials are, they're beautiful and I think it's going to be really, really a powerful learning thing for our students, but they're expensive. So all of these things that support those classes are, are very, very expensive. The other thing that I highlighted just because it's sort of a, the CompSci computer lab needs to be updated. So that's just a, sort of a routine thing, but you never really know depending on how much the CompSci curriculum changes in the course of a year or over a couple of years or how the usage breaks down those, those, they're actually desktops, so it's a little bit different than, than what we use in other classes. Those are really the highlights, the online support down there at the bottom. There's a product there called Edge Elastic, which allows our teachers to again, take an exam, put it into this product. They can see from that particular product how long it takes students to even answer one question. It gives them a ton of information and also allows us to look across, across schools. So right now, if we want to do that, we can look at, we can actually look at, you know, raw scores. We can actually look at the product, which we did that one year. That was insane. We had like, you know, 168 eighth grade tests in this and I, and that was quite labor-intensive. This product pulls that all together so that teachers can put, can put the actual test into the product, the kids can take it and the product does a lot of that work. So a lot of these things, probably a little bit AI-ish in a way, but they are, they are eliminating some of the more labor-intensive tasks that teachers used to do and I think that's really helpful information. It's really great for us to be able to see across the district on an exam in real time, not in summer work six months later, but in real time. Wow, you know, this teacher's kids knocked it out of the park with fractions. This teacher's kids didn't, didn't. And for those teachers to be able to talk about it, because they would be using the product, it wouldn't necessarily be an administrative product, we would look at it obviously, but it's for teachers to be able to use that information in real time and to be able to have those important conversations. And again, as I mentioned, we are going to be adding iReady for grades three to five. That cost is already embedded into the, the budget because we have a product already that supports literacy for grades three to five. So it would be a swap out between Lexia and iReady. So.
So when you're saying that 125 is in the maintenance of effort budget, that's basically saying that, so people know, the programs we're already using are costing us 125,000 more for this coming year?
No.
Okay. Well, I'm glad I'm asking that then.
Yeah. The maintenance of effort budget means that it's already there, so you'd subtract the 125. You can see it clearly on this.
Right, that's what I meant. So, yeah, I was gonna, well, yeah, I guess I just explained it right.
Yeah, so my request, my request is really for the 32790 right there. And again, broken out by each of those areas that I just reviewed, we have in our maintenance of effort budget for curriculum and instruction, there's 165,000 dollars in that budget already, give or take. Another 320. Does anyone have any questions? I know a lot of this is stuff that you've seen before.
One observation is that on, on page one, you know, we're doing with, we're going with no red ink and then all the, all the requests are red ink. So I don't know what kind of message that is, but.
I'm here for you. I like a good visual. So do you have questions, other questions, Mike?
I don't really think so right now, no.
Okay, great. David?
No, I just picked up on one point, we were talking about having to go out and kind of solicit opportunities and things. I'm almost thinking it's maybe something we even do here ourselves and almost like a parent's night. I'm drawing a blank on what, there's an event we do, it's a career fair put on by Rockland Bank.
Yep.
And there is probably 30 or 40. And there is probably thirty or forty people from-
Credit for life.
Credit for life, thank you. All walks of life that are there, and I'm not sure if we're approaching them. And then I said, and I know it's also during the day, so it's hard for people, but I almost wonder if we did a, you know, kind of a blast and say, hey, a coffee information night-
Sure.
Cause you'll find people, parents that are, um, you know, a good friend of ours is like head of trauma at a social hospital. She might not be the person we need to get to, but she can get you to Patrick, or you know that-
She might be able to direct us, right.
So, I'm just thinking something like that.
I think that's a great idea. I, I do know Mary Ellen attends a lot of events. She goes to the eighth-grade program of studies night, she goes to the one that is at the high school as, as well. She's constantly soliciting.
Yeah.
She's been to the, um, she did a, a presentation last year at the, not the Rotary, the-
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce, Chamber of Commerce. So, she is out there, her, you know, and that was very effective, you're right. The more we can get two people one-on-one and maybe have those small group presentations, I, I think that's, that would be really helpful.
Well, yeah, I just, you'd find that, you know, I may not be a career path for someone who is in school, but I might know someone vice versa, so just throwing it out there.
Great idea.
Thank you.
Allison?
For the materials section, this isn't all consumable, right?
Oh, it's not all consumable, no.
Just a couple.
Yeah, some of them are, a few of them are there, and, you know, most of them are not consumables. They'll, they'll, they'll be with us for a while. I think our, you know, AP psych text is like ten years old or twelve years old, so they'll be with us for a long time.
Okay. Patrick?
I have a bunch.
Go for it, see if I can answer them.
Can you go to the fiscal year twenty-five goals of reorganization with teaching and learning? So, the first two that are really sort of zero-cost shifts, it's almost, oh, back one more.
Oh, sorry, I can't see without my glasses on.
Yeah, no, it's all good. So, I get why it's zero dollars, because it's gonna be absorbed by existing staff, right? Or it's money that we would've spent somewhere that, right?
For a math content supervisor.
Yeah, correct, right? So, my question is, if we're moving the math content supervisor and combining it with the science content supervisor, TET to STEM, total sense logic, but right now, we've got a science content supervisor doing full-time work, so it doesn't mean, like, does science lose and math gains, or?
Um, well, I don't know, I don't see it that way. I see it as a, a role where the person has enough expertise in both sides of the aisle that they can, you know, still be our liaison with the state and still make the adjustments that we need to be, oversee the adjustments that needs to be made with our curriculum, and they could, um, take on some of the observations of those, of those departments.
It's almost like you're getting some economies of scale very low in one person, I guess, right? And then the same with the elementary content supervisor position. Is that actually a new role that we're then using some of the money we had to be able to put in there, which is why it's zero cost?
Yes, so it would be a new role, but it would be, um, basically, if you think about the salary that was there for Mark Duffy.
No, right, that's exactly what I'm saying, right?
There's, there's another piece to that, I think, is that it's important to talk about as well, is that, um, you know, getting somebody with, into an elementary content supervisor position helps us build our bench a little bit, but we have admin openings, right?
I agree.
So, we don't, we don't have a lot of opportunities at the elementary level for, for staff to self-identify as interested in curricular work or interested in admin work, so this gives us an opportunity. We don't have a very deep bench when it comes to filling vacancies at the admin level at the elementary levels.
I actually think it's incredibly important for that reason, right? You know, to have the bench, to have better coordination amongst the three, you know, the curriculum, and even some of the new pedagogy is getting more complex, right? It's going deeper in different areas, it's shifting and changing, and having someone that can navigate that, I think, would be, would be incredibly helpful. And to your point, if we're just repositioning dollars that we're carrying today, I think it makes a lot of sense. The secondary instructor and technology integrator, you know, when I first saw that, I was like, eh, you know, in a year like this, do we need that? Like, is that a real need? But then it went back to what those kids were showing us that came to do the engineering and the, the computer programming pathway, and I really began to think about, even just look around here, right? The amount of higher level and deeper technology-
Mm-hmm.
-at the secondary level, it's so different than what they have here, that it almost requires a, a different skill set. So, do we get there this year? I don't know that yet, but if we don't, I think it's important, to your point, to get it on the list. And please, 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 let's get a language teacher at the elementary level. Kids learn faster, they pick up languages faster the younger they are, they become more proficient, and it will, it's the hook, right? I mean, when we, you and I defended Latin tooth and nail, and I still don't know if it'll survive, I still think it's super important, but we need to bring those kids along, right? And if it's not in Latin, even if it's in, you know, Spanish and French, I would strongly encourage us to branch out, but, you know, Arabic-
Our initial thinking was it would be somewhat like of an orbit, right? So, to provide kids with some choices, this is-
I think it's just such an important, an, an important idea. And then the curriculum work, right, that, you know, it's twenty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars. I remember years when that was a hundred and fifty-eight thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, because we were re-engineering the curriculum, we were drilling it down from those AP courses down to kindergarten. This, I, I just wanna make sure we all understand, is baseline maintenance of curriculum work, right? We can't sustain, I know you're shocked, right? You're like, what have you done to me? But we can't sustain-
It only took twenty years.
That level, (laugh) fair enough, that level of curriculum work every year. So, we have to be prepared that next year, that might be eighty-eight thousand dollars in order to continue to, um, sort of move that forward, and it's why having open AP and being able to give the AP offerings and everything else that we have is so successful, right? Cause it's bringing in the integration of the curriculum throughout those different levels and those different grade levels is, um, super important.
One of the things, Patrick, that I didn't even point out too, but you can see that we're starting to group grade six a little bit more freely.
With, I saw that, with to the middle school level?
With curriculum, with curriculum.
And I think it's the right thing to do.
It is, based on the way that, you know-
It's also not as much of a shock when the kids make the bridge, right, from six to seven, because they're, they're getting the rigor, they're getting used to what's there.
Yeah, and what, even this year, moving our report cards to a more middle school type of report card, we have not had many complaints, it's been mostly positive feedback. Parents have liked having the portal open. When it's been open, teachers are loving it, and the teachers that are, um, teaching, they're teaching about two classes now instead of four classes each day, that just their ability to go deeper is, is been very, very positive, so.
So, then, on the next slide, I kinda put on my creative finance hat, and, I'll keep going.
You mean that one?
Yeah, this one.
There you go.
So, so-
One-time ask?
Yes, exactly. So, when I went through this, right, the hundred nineteen thousand dollars, is that the total cost for the three years, or is that a hundred nineteen thousand dollars a year?
That's a three-year, that's a three-year.
So, it's, it's a one-time cost for the three years, we pay upfront?
Yes.
Okay.
You can split it, but it's more expensive to buy it when you're in town.
No, no, I'm not advocating for that. So, I, that's the way I took it. And the asks that are here, I think there is a legitimate argument to be made that two hundred twenty-one thousand one hundred seventy-two dollars of those asks could be one-time money, that we could ask for one-time money, that we've been told is available still. If we take that two hundred twenty-one thousand one hundred seventy-two dollars, and if we got it a little higher fine, that actually means that we have seventy-four thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars of savings in our maintenance of effort budget, cause we're carrying a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for that. So, again, from a budget perspective, while we're still trying to close a gap, if we can get more and save seventy-five grand, I'm taking that as a creative finance win, right? I think it's a great thing to be able to do. And we're looking for, we've got one-time money that has to be spent. I would send this over-
Yeah, I mean, I think there's still some conversation that needs to happen about how much one-time money is available, what fiscal year it's available in, um, curricular purchases of things.
We could pre-vine, you could pre-vine.
So, textbooks, you can, right? So, so the Envision piece comes with a software subscription and the data. So, there's, there's some, there's definitely some things we can work through.
I think there's some things we can absolutely work through with that.
That's kinda why I had them in red.
I would add a couple of red things to that.
Really is. So, I thought it would be like something that we could-
No, no, I think it's, I, my point is, I think that this gives us a lot of opportunity. And again, if I can generate seventy-five thousand dollars in savings and get more, you know, and, you know, it also gives us a little cushion, right? Even if that savings thirty-five thousand, cause we don't get the whole thing, I think it's a win, and I think thinking creatively from both a financial perspective, well, we're enhancing the quality of what we offer is, is really important. And then I promise this is the last thing, I'm sorry, it's a huge area. Um, you mentioned the open AP component, and I think it's more for the folks out there to sort of hear, it's so important that we do this. We do not require anyone to test in, to have a certain grade level, to take a prerequisite. We are encouraging our high school kids to take college-level courses, and they are, from all the research says it's true, all the anecdotal evidence says it's true, our kids that have been there will tell you it's true, they are more successful in college because they have that opportunity, and some of them save tens of thousands of dollars because of credit transfer. So, it is something that, just philosophically, is you guys keep going and kinda carry the torch forward, but hold on to that, it is really, really important to be able to do. So, that's it, and I'll take my check.
And just in terms of next steps, we've talked about some of this before, we're in those process of selecting what's gonna happen in science and literacy. Um, we are, um, very interested in pursuing, you'll see a proposal next year to enter the program of studies for pre-AP pre-calc. They put it out in a few communities, I, I know Weymouth did it, and Duxbury did it, a couple of other communities did it, they've been very positive about it, but they're still working it out, so I'm glad that we, we took a, a break on that. The one thing about the AP pre-calc is that would not necessarily garner you college credit, but it's still a very rigorous and very strong national curriculum that I think that we should be offering to our students.
And what grade would that be available?
Would you start in? AP pre-calc?
Eleven.
Probably, I think they usually do it in eleventh. Um, we do have a few students that would probably access it earlier, so we have, it would be a bit of a mixed group.
Kids would know that they wouldn't get credit, no matter-
Oh, we would explain it, right? Yeah, we would explain it upfront. Um, and I would probably, my recommendation would be to run that and the honors level for the first year until people were comfortable about, about what that was gonna look like. Um, and then we'll be adding our third courses for biomedical and for engineering next year, and I'm gonna still keep pushing for some kind of requirement around either world language and electives for, for our kids. And I think one of the eye-opening things for me this year was the research and looking at what other communities are doing and requiring of students, and I don't want our students not to be exploring areas, because we're not pushing them hard enough to do that, so I think that's something that, um, we'll come back to next year.
So, you didn't get a chance to get questions?
Yep, no, that's okay. So, I was just gonna say too, um, I mean, I actually agree with adding the world languages in elementary. If this ever year, we can start that, I know this is a horrible year to do it, but like, that would be-
It's been on the list for like six years now.
I know.
I keep telling these two.
I just have to digest the concept.
We gotta keep at it.
I, I just think it would be such a win for Pembroke if we could have that. I also wanna mention too, like, um, we're planning, I, I'm on the Chamber of Commerce Board, and we're planning a parent, uh, you know, a Pembroke night out in the fall for all area businesses, and I think that would be a great place for Pembroke to have a table.
Yep.
Um, you could go in and have, you know, put your table, have, have some of the Pathway students there, and Mary Ellen, I think, I bet there'd be a lot of connections that could be made there.
That's great, great. Any of those ideas that you guys have, I'm writing them down, I think it would be awesome.
Yeah, it'd be amazing. Um, and then, um, what else did I wanna ask? Can you just describe to me what the Fish Tank, it, cause I, I don't think I was clear on that, I was just curious.
So, Fish Tank is, um, so, a hundred years ago, you used to get a big box full of, uh, books for your classroom, and then you'd get a hundred manuals and a hundred workbooks and all of that stuff. The manuals are now like online, and some of the reading, you still have to buy the books, but they're books for KDA two classrooms, so they're books that are mostly read aloud. As the students get older, they're more about, uh, more novels or biography or something that's, um, nonfiction, so they, they change as, as the kids get older, and even the younger classes have that too. It just gives you a structure, and it gives you a common unit, some common themes. It's not nearly as expensive as the, those old programs were that were very heavy on a lot of consumables that you had to purchase every year, because now it's all located in a hub. We kinda had something similar to that when we had Empowering Writers, but this just gives you book suggestions and unit suggestions. You don't have to follow, like, none, none of it, you have to follow exactly. Our teachers and administrators would be identifying what were the right books and what were the right units that we wanted to teach at each grade level. So, they, they might have in their Fish Tank curriculum, say they have ten books. Maybe we decide next year as a pilot, we have three term, three, three semesters at the elementary level, three trimesters, right? Sorry, three trimesters. So, with each, each trimester, we do one unit and see what we think. It's, it's just to see if it's the right fit. I'm not sure that it is. There might be some recommendations before we even purchase Fish Tank to do that, but right now, that's what we're looking of, that's the type of program we're thinking of that gives us some flexibility, but also some commonality. We do have some common units, but we wanna make sure that we're continuing to give kids a lot of the same opportunities, school to school. It's very challenging with the three different elementary schools to, to stay at, you know-
Absolutely, yeah. And then, lastly, thank you for all of the grant funding.
It's a joy. Jesse now has three different portals for granting, granting money. You have to take a, a tech course just to figure out which one you're using, it's crazy.
Before we move on, I just wanna check with Lauren, who's sitting quietly over there. Do you have any questions about, um, in either of these presentations?
No, um, I saw about the AP courses, I like that. I wish we had, Rob, I mean, um, world history when I was a sophomore, I would like to take that.
Yeah.
Instead of U S one, that's such a good opportunity with the students, then they're adding in after the incoming sophomores.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a win. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
You can still take it, as I see it.
Thank you very much for the presentations, those are great.
Um, next, under my report, you have two trips. The first one is an out-of-state overnight field trip for the PHS Music Department to New York City. Um, the dates of the trip are April, um, third through the sixth, twenty twenty-five. The details Gwen has provided there.
Does anybody have any questions about that? Mike, David?
All the chaperones are set, you know?
Uh, once we have the number of students-
Yeah, you'll know.
Okay. Is there a motion, uh, for approval, approval for the overnight out-of-state PHS Music Department trip to New York City?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In the eyes of it.
The second trip is, um, for the World Languages Department, it's a trip to France, so it's similar to the cultural exchange program we do with Spain right now. This is, um, for the students to go to Paris, and another place that I can't say, in France. This is a conceptual approval. Obviously, we need to know how many students are interested, you can see the pricing of the packages is based off a minimum number of students. Um, if there's less than ten students interested in participating, we wouldn't be able to If there's less than 10 students interested in participating, we wouldn't be able to offer the trip.
Okay. Any questions, Mike, Dave?
No, thank you.
I don't think I have any questions.
All right. Is there a motion for approval for the overnight out-of-state World Languages Department trip to France?
Conceptual approval, right?
Conceptual, sorry. Sorry.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. All right. Onto Subcommittee Liaison Updates.
In your packet, you, we took a little bit of break from Policy Manual, but we are in Section I. In your packet, you have Section I, which is instruction. The cover page is just an outline of what is currently in our policy manual and what the suggested action from the policy subcommittee was. And then there's five new policies in looking at the MAS C sample manual that the policy subcommittee is recommending that we add. I want to draw your attention to Policy I and B, Controversial Issues in Speakers. So it's in your packet, there's, it's obviously a redlined version. Policy Subcommittee met to talk about this back in August. They had not, they did not meet again after the conversations that we had in January. So I went in and edited to reflect the conversation that we had at the school committee level in regards to putting in our policy, outlining how students and families could voice a concern, report a concern, what the reporting structure was. So that information is, is included in I and B for a first read.
Okay, great. Do you have any questions, Mike?
Yeah, one thing I want, I thought might be a good idea to add to this. Obviously, we can't find out who complains, we're not supposed to know any of that stuff. But what if we had a, a component of this that had some kind of school committee oversight where we find out there was a complaint, how it was resolved, to make sure that everything is working properly? Maybe that's something we can discuss, unless you guys don't think it's worthwhile. But I think it might not be a bad idea to just have a little bit of oversight, just to say, just so we can kind of track how it's working.
So I think, I, I think we're starting to step into an area that may not be our role. But I think if we wanted to ask the administration to produce something that showed how many complaints came in, you know, how many complaints were resolved, are there any outstanding?
Yeah, that's what I mean. Something to that effect, just data.
I don't think that should, that needs to be in the policy though, because that could shift from, from time to time. We can ask for that, we own that data. But I don't know that, I don't know that we have an oversight role there unless something got to the point where somebody wanted to come before the committee, right? Which would be different.
Yeah, that would be different.
And the others, the other paragraph came from.
The first red paragraph came from Policy Subcommittee, that was the original revision, and then I just went.
But it was from another policy.
It came from MAS C, yeah.
I actually liked it. I thought that was a really good paragraph.
What, that first red paragraph? Yeah, I did too.
It came from 4.4.
And I think having the escalation, which is what we talked about.
Yep.
I, I think is a good idea.
So just remember, these are first reads, they're, you can absolutely digest.
Can I just ask one question though? Why did we eliminate the homework and the honor roll policies?
Because it's in our student handbooks. So it's not a school committee policy necessarily, it gets printed in student handbooks.
I just wanted to make sure.
We still have homework and we still have honor roll.
Yeah, we weren't saying that there's no homework and that we don't have an honor roll.
Nope.
And I want to point out that I wanted to change youngsters to students.
I thought I did.
No, you did.
Oh, I did, okay. I was like, I got that added.
Those youngsters?
Those youngsters, I can't believe that was in there.
Shows you how outdated some of the, the languages in these. We're going to get our knickers on.
David, what is still in there, one second for another time.
I'm good, thank you.
I see youngsters.
I'll find it.
So we'll amend youngsters. So moved to accept Policy Section on the first read.
Hold on just a second, I just want to.
Were we asking questions about everything that's in this?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I had a couple of other questions.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Let me try and go through where I was looking at here. Under IGA, IGO.
So this, it's a new policy, yep.
Yep.
IGA, IGD, Curriculum Development and Adoption.
I had written down some notes, I just want to look at it really quickly so I can. Boy, are these not alphabetical order.
No.
So at the end or the. No, I read the brand new policies.
Oh, I see, okay.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, Curriculum Development and Adoption. I had written down, and I don't know if we need to put language in here, maybe not, but I think there's a misconception that school committee, what, what we do when it comes to curriculum or what our role is, I mean, we're not developing curriculum.
Absolutely not.
We're basically just approving or disapproving of the curriculum that's proposed to us. I don't know if there would have to be something written in there, because it, it does mention the committee itself will consider and officially adopt new programs and courses. Well, I don't know what you guys might think, just to clarify our role in the process.
These came from.
Go ahead.
MAS C. So the, we took the sample policies from MAS C directly for, I'm pretty sure all five of them, right?
Right, and you all do approve curriculum? I mean, courses, that's the Program of Studies conversation that we have. You all approve curriculum in the form of yours, supporting or not supporting the budget that we put forward each year. I'm not sure what else you would add for language, but happy to, happy to entertain.
No, I, I actually agree with Mike though, because when, when you read this, it says the superintendent will have the authority to approve new program or course of study after they have been thoroughly studied and found to support educational goals, seems reasonable. The committee itself will consider and officially adopt new programs in courses when they constitute an extensive alteration in instructional content or approach. I, I would at least either define that or, or somehow make that a little more specific. I mean, while I know it comes from MAS C, I don't have the same level of confidence that you guys might have in what MAS C is put out. But I do think one of our requirements is to approve curriculum. And I think that delineation does need to be there, because again, some of these policies will survive or should survive, many of us at the table, right? So we're giving guidance to future committees on, here's what your role is.
Yep, I'm happy to try to draft something and include it for the next one.
Something with that kind of language. And then I think, is it IILD? I had written down, yeah.
Student submission, yep.
To Educational Surveys of Research. It says that a parent or guardian can request the survey before it's distributed to students. So does that mean that the parents are notified ahead of time that there's going to be a survey coming out?
We almost always notify when we're giving surveys, yep.
I just want to make sure that.
I mean, I just want to clarify, if, if the history teacher gives a survey in her class about like, you know, last week's lesson, that's, that's not what this is talking about. This is talking about Eutheros Behavior Survey, some of the screening tools, those type of global surveys, we always notify in advance.
Okay, so it's not just like a class, classwork survey type thing, okay.
And I think that's important, right? I mean, because we've even reviewed things here that we say, I'm not comfortable with this, right? So I think that level of governance, both here and to parents first, is really important.
Agree. And I think, oh, to clarify as well on IJNDD, I think it was a social media.
Oh, yeah, policy and social media, we don't have one of those right now.
Yeah, it's a brand new one, this is great. It's talking about what's inappropriate or, you know, not, what's inappropriate to put on social media for employees. And it mentions about using school computers. Is this, my question was like, is this in relation to their personal social media? Or do they, would they put out anything on social media as like, I don't know, Erin Obi Superintendent? Is there anything like that on social media or is there, anything you do is personal, right?
But, so there are a number of our staff that have both personally and professional social media footprints.
Yeah, so would this only apply to their professional, I guess is what I mean.
No, so, you know, number one, improper fraternization with students using social media is your personal or your professional. You should not be friending and, and following and liking things from students. The use of our school computers, there are times that, you know, Brandon Hall will tweet something from his office computer that has to do with Hall's homework, which is his professional page. But the, the overarching rules are for both, both types.
Okay.
All set?
Yeah.
Kids can always find the teacher's social media profile, always. Even when they change their name or do their initials.
David, do you have any questions?
No, I'm okay, thank you.
Allison?
Okay, so I, I was wondering, do we have the IJNDB slash R? No, not that, no, sorry, that's the wrong one.
Moving for IGL.
Yeah, IG, yeah, exactly.
So there was a little bit of conversation after I sent you all the packet about, in our current policy, Policy IJ-R, reconsideration of library resources and materials. We're asking you to recode it just to follow the MAS C guidance. That policy in particular was discussed at the October 4th, 2022 School Committee Meeting in regards to what happens if there's a complaint about a library material. I looked back at the minutes, which is what we said we would do during the policy subcommittee meeting when we, we looked at this. Sue, I think, had an opportunity to listen to the recording, bless her. And during the conversation back in October, I, I think the minutes don't necessarily accurately reflect what the conversation in the meeting was. So at that meeting, we discussed removing the material while the complaint was investigated. That didn't make it to the policy on October 4th of 2022. So Sue and I chatted earlier about just amending the draft of this to include that language. So for your second read, there'll be an update to IGLA-R.
So good. So is there a, a motion for a first read?
Is that policy in here?
No.
No.
No, because it was just a recode.
Okay. So would that still be a first read or would that be a first read next time?
I can give it to you separately as a first read for next time.
So is there a consideration, I mean, is there a motion for a first read for Policy Section I Instruction?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it.
So the Vocational Planning Committee met.
Yeah.
The week before last?
Yep.
I think. And so Tom Hickey joined us once again to share with us kind of some updates on where the Social or Tech project is. Their committee had made the decision to go with the renderings for the 900 students building. So remember, the last time we gave an update, they had 850 and 900, and they were toying with the idea of going back and asking for schematic design on 750 just to see if they could drive the cost down to the point where the project was a little bit more appealing to some of the member towns. There was such a small cost differential between 850 and 900 that I think those at the table decided that it makes the most sense to go with 900. I think it was a million dollar difference on the event, right?
Something like that.
So they were talking a little bit about their timeline. They are in a January 2025 timeline for having, for having, having their member towns approve the project. And so I think, you know, when we had originally first started talking about timelines at our table, we were talking about potentially the fall of 2024 or the spring of 2025. The conversations that we had with, with Tom really put us in the, the spring of 2025 as, as our target timeline. That does mean that a lot of the work will happen in the fall. So I would anticipate from the school committee level us giving the presentation in early fall, so early October, about whether or not, or the presentation with the information. Here's the numbers, here's what we're thinking, here's what it'll look like, so that you all have an opportunity to discuss and decide if you are moving it forward as a warrant article or not. If the Select Board wants to pick it up, we want to make sure that that conversation is happening in the fall. Because those of us that have sat around this table for large projects know it takes, takes a significant amount of education of the community. And we can't wait to January to do that. So I want to make sure that, you know, by mid-fall, we all have an idea of the direction that the committee is looking to go in so that we can start planning those nights, start to putting together those materials if we're the ones that are going to be moving the project forward here, so.
Great.
Tom said it's important that we give, at least give a signal that we're serious about this as they're, you know, meeting in January, that, that we are really serious about joining South Shore VOTech, that we really, you know, so we'll have these discussions in the fall and we'll go from there. But he also, another thing that he'd mentioned, which I think a lot of people were thinking that Pembroke students wouldn't be accepted until after the renovation is done. If we were to approve this, if we were to get this, get this through, they'll start taking our students the following fall.
Right, so it would be the fall of 26.
And right away, yeah.
So would we get this on the fall, like in, at the Fall Town Meeting or would this have to go to the spring?
It would go to the spring, because it's a two-part vote. So you're asking people, we could, you could split it, which I wouldn't recommend, recommend in doing. But the first question is, do you support joining? And then the second is, do you support paying for it? So I think you, if, you could get wildly different answers if you asked in the fall, do you support joining? And then in the spring, way to ask, do you support funding it?
I think, I wasn't 100% clear on this, but I thought if we voted to join, then that already put us on the hook.
You are bound, yes.
Yeah, we were bound to pay whatever they tell us to. So we're going to do it, we, it's best to do it together.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Marshfield did it that way, right?
So Marshfield's an entirely different community in the sense that Marshfield has some space in their, their levy limit where they feel as though they will be able to fund the first few years of student enrollment without a debt exclusion override. So we don't have any space in our levy limit here.
We've been through this, right? Is there anything we can do with the internship programs, with other programs to give kids that are desperate for some form of vocational education and opportunity before?
Yep, so I mean, there's stuff that we can do as a school district and then there's things you can do as a family, right? So Social or Tech opens their shops at nighttime for students to come in and get exposure to, to some of the trades that are offered there. You know, Tom and I have talked extensively over the past decade about, is there a shop that's lower enrolled that we could, you know, send kids in a van over to take advantage of? We're still exploring those options, but, you know, I think, you know, part of some of the work that Josh Cutler did a few years ago was about giving opportunities, after-hours opportunities in the shops. And South Shore Tech is one of those folks that jumped on that. So there are definitely opportunities for students and for families, whether it's a summer program that they're offering or an after-school program that they're offering. You know, we don't have necessarily with our rotating, drop backwards, upside-down schedule at the high school, a lot of flexibility to get kids over there during the day and have them still meet their requirements. But each year, we talk about, is this the year that we freeze the schedule and just the morning rotates or just the afternoon rotates? So that we can give kids a block of time during the day where they could explore those type of things.
I, I just, if there's any way, I mean, unfortunately, it doesn't get, get a kid a certified, you know, sort of program. It doesn't get them a VOTech sort of diploma. But I just think anything we can do to try and give kids the ability to, to access, you know, while we figure this out or try to figure this out, I think it's important.
I agree.
Definitely.
I'm just happy though that it's going to be, I mean, if we get it through, everything's going to happen much quicker than initially thought.
It's an important point.
Right, so there was some conversation at the committee level about like, what is the role of the committee? Batted that around a little bit the last time. So the, the role of the committee is to gather information.
Yep.
I'm not coming to you and saying that the, the committee endorses joining or not joining. We're presenting the school committee factual information that we're able to gather. And then you all are deciding whether or not it makes sense to move forward. There was some sentiment that, you know, I know that you're going to say no. It has nothing to do with my, what I'm feeling. It's the committee gathering information, us presenting that information, that factual information, and then you all deciding as a body of five, is this something that the school committee is getting behind, so.
Great. Well, you know, thank you so much for all of your work on the committee, really appreciate it, because I know it's a lot of extra.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, so. Any communications in the email box?
Nope, there's nothing in there.
All right, so future meeting dates and topics, meeting again and.
So we are meeting on April 1st, that is your next meeting. That is a Monday, which is different than Tuesday. And the focus that night will be the admin recommended budget as well as potentially the fee discussion. I know that we want to try to get the, our budgets up together to look at that. We also talked about the idea of having that April 1st meeting be a joint meeting with the Select Board and Advisory. Though we did an extensive amount of backwards planning this year into October to start our budget process, believe it or not, we're going to run out of time before we get to town meeting. So in the interest of having those two boards have the opportunity to really spend some time digesting the school budget and, and the ability to ask questions, I think it makes sense to invite them to that meeting as a joint meeting. As opposed to us presenting our budget at a Select Board or Advisory meeting when eight or nine other departments are also presenting, so.
Absolutely. All right, so the next meeting is April 1st, so is there a.
So I have a, a topic, I'd like to bring the discussion, the vote for the best practice of recording subcommittee meetings and be on the post minutes for.
I think we were planning to do it at the next meeting anyways.
Okay, perfect.
And Erin, assuming Advisory in the slots when I come in, we'll make sure those materials get out at the same time.
Absolutely, so whatever I'm circulating for you all for the budget, I will circulate to them as well.
I appreciate that.
Great, so is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. All right, the ayes have it.